Good evening, thank you for being here tonight. Today is August 7, 2018. I'll talk for today. You can often change your circumstances by changing your attitude as Eleanor Roosevelt. I want to go ahead and fix the college meeting for order tonight. I'll feature churches, Rainbow Covenant Ministries. Pastor Perry Lick, he is here. Another time tonight we have here. More of the ministry. And um, we're about to do a three year review. Um, we did a little bit like the ministry. Uh, we're about to do a three year review. Um, we have a point. But we need to look like we're involved in our, through the church then. For it. Let's see, let's see here, man, that was good.
First I want to say, good evening to each and every one of you and to the community. Um, my name is Claire Lick. Mostly, probably no one heard of me, but sitting in this community, been in this community all my life. I am the pastor of Rainbow Covenant Ministry for 25 years. Also, the founder of the Shelter, which is the garden that sent me home this shelter. We have served over thirty-seven thousand people since 2001. Also, we provide services for women's, families, for babies and women's out of incarceration from the state of Georgia, just for prisons. So, everyone that entered to the shelter, it's private purpose. Uh, we don't get walk-ins. And it's through his communities and, relax, so we serve five counties. We serve five counties in Newton, Broaddale, Jasper, um, Bus County, Morgan, and Walton. Those are the counties that we serve. The most people we see that come from the counties are from Newton and Broaddale. The other counties, uh, probably about one or two percent of us that come from those counties. Um, and thank you for asking me to come tonight, uh, to be a part of this community and a very part of this community all my life. And I'm, I'm a commissioner serving. I'm a servant most than all, than anything else. So I thank the commissioners for your hard work and what you do for our community. At this time, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening. We glorify your name. We thank you for how you have kept us down until this appointed time. We ask your blessings this evening upon this meeting. Wish your blessings upon each and every commissioner in our chair. We thank you for the assignments that you have released into their lives. We pray that they carry out those assignments always with your name in the beginning and at the first. So Father, we thank you right now for our community. We ask that you cover this community in a special way, from the east side to the west side and north side. Lord, we just thank you this evening, Father. So every decision that we made here tonight, Lord, let it be you in the midst of that decision. Even in this agreement, Lord, that we can all still work together. So Father, right now, we ask your blessing upon each and every one of those that have been called and those that have been assigned for this county to lead us and take us to the next level in this community. Look on us, bless us, God, keep us, and we will always give you praise. And we thank you again tonight, Lord, for you are our Lord and Savior. And we will always recognize that in Christ's name we pray, in our hearts say amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you for being here. Uh, you provide service in our community that's like none of the other. Uh, and so, and then we want to say we appreciate the impact that you do. Uh, thank you for your leadership and your team of people that serve us. Thank you so much. Uh, next we're going to ask Commissioner Sam with any believers in the pledge.
I'm blessed to live in the United States of America and in the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Sam, Pastor Lick. I want to make an announcement before we go forward. Uh, I know there's a lot of people here, uh, that want to talk about the, the two tables that were there at the last meeting, uh, the adoption of the military and the adoption of uh, operating budget fifty-year, 2019. Uh, these items have to be advertised correctly. Uh, so these items, these two items will be taken to our next meeting, which will be 8/21/18. 8/21/18. That does not mean you cannot come up and talk tonight, uh, about these items. But I just want to let you know that these two items will be tabled again until 8/21/18. Uh, Commissioner, I have a couple of changes before we adopt the agenda. Uh, first change is, uh, we want to take opportunity to move 9C from the contingent. First of all, we want to remove is, uh, 9, 9, uh, C. We want to make that only the, uh, rid of, uh, item number 10A. We want to also remove item 9B. 9B. And we want to make that 10B. So we want to remove item number 9C and make that 10A. We want to remove item 10, how many, 9B and make that 10B. Also, we want to remove item number 11 altogether.
We also have one change. I'd like to thank Dr. Watley for having such great eyes and catching this one for us on a scripter's ear. If you look at number 9H, that resolution number is becoming R073018C instead of D. This is ratification of before's decision to fund the library at our last meeting. Unfortunately, uh, we did not have the right resolution and package, so we were to ratify that tonight.
Commissioner, any questions? I see the motion that we approve the agenda, uh, and change. This is a motion, uh, that we approve by Commissioner Sam and the second by Commissioner Edwards. All in favor? Pass it by the bureau, thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for real live citizens to come up and talk about agenda items only. You allow three minutes to do so. You may come and sign, please state your name and your address for the record, please. You may come up and talk about any agenda item. Is that a bed lighter? We might actually sign with your cell phone if we do it, please. Uh, you may come, come up and talk about any agenda item. Um, you got three minutes to do so, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Welcome to talk about priorities that they've all seen, which, um... My name is Joel Trust, I live at 4203 Lees Town, Dry in Covington. In the last week since the previous meeting, I've had a chance to talk to some commissioners and look at the current tax structure. And I just wanted to take this moment to push or recommend you guys to at least look at changes to the tax structure to give you further options, funding the government outside of the regulations. I know that's a little bit difficult with current legislature and everything that's on the tax. But I do believe it can be done with the right team and another time before. It's just a moving forward suggestion. That's all I have to say, thank you very much and good luck with your work tonight.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak on agenda topics, hold on.
Father Morgan, 21th Street, East Street, Covington, Georgia. I want all of this board is wanting to consider a budget resolution that would include the one-time use of Facebook funds in the amount of ninety thousand dollars to fund ongoing expenses. What will you do next year with a pure folly?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak on agenda topics, hold on. This is an opportunity if you want to speak on agenda topics. Soon people came to my office, I want to give y'all a time to do it if there's time to come down.
My name is Nancy Wiley, 369 Oak Hill Road. I'm here representing five families, and I hope this has something to do with the agenda meeting. Uh, we are senior citizens. We have a shared driveway, county installed, um, pipes underneath the creek in 2001 because of the rain and over the years, it's falling apart. And we need help. Or we're going to be without a way to number one, get out of the driveways and...
I would, I would hate to, I have to cut you off because this is not a agenda topic, but you are more than welcome to speak. You have three minutes to do so. You have another citizen comments at the end of the meeting. Uh, please, ma'am, please come at the speed, please. Thank you. Agenda topics, hold on, please. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Representative Johnson, 1995 Highway 162 South, Covington, Georgia. I think I'll be a little bit over here. It's a commission. President, uh, I appreciate this opportunity to speak as a senior citizen. This is not, I'm a senior citizen that's concerned about, I was outraged at, I was, uh, based news media and that speaks against our police department and our shared department. I'm here to make plea to you as a board commissioner, as a taxpayer, as a citizen of Newton County, for the lifetime of citizens, uh, to try to impress you how important it is to have a shared department and a police department within our county. Keep our citizens safe and our children safe and to keep them free. And to do this, to do this, they must be equipped. They must be equipped with proper equipment, protect them safe first, to protect us as citizens. And to do this, they must have funds to do this. If they're underfunded, they can't have funds to employ the property employees to keep them because they're underpaid, shared department is underpaid, uh, members are not going to stay going somewhere else. And we as a county, I know that we are better than that. We are better than that. We can keep a good police and a shared department, but we have to pay that. So it's left up to the U.S. commissions to fund the budget of Newton County shared department with other law enforcement offices, lead to be equipped to protect our children and our community. Crime is rising, and we know that. Industry is moving in and crime is going to get bigger. So we need to take forward on getting our shared department, police department, what they need to work with to keep us safe and secure. This concludes my remarks. And I appreciate giving me this opportunity because I'm out there with the shared department and police department every day and living this community all my life. And we see the needs for more police officers and the bureaus or whatsoever that's working in the office and what they, they need money that they can stay there and support their family as well as you have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Agenda topics, hold on, please.
Good evening, I'm Shepard, man, 169, Goodest Drive. I just want to sort of piggyback off what, uh, Ethan Johnson said. I would like to say to know that the president, first of all, consider where you live, what you expect, and then, we know that crime is increased and it, it reached on time depending on where your offices are in the county. So if you have a need for adaptation, that definitely spread it so far out that it take them thirty hours, forty minutes to get to you, don't get angry because you don't have enough, you know, enforcement officers here. Where I live, man, if I call the police within ten, fifteen minutes, it's full car out there. If you live out in the other outskirts of the county, the damage is, is spread so far far that it might take me thirty minutes. And I'm saying myself as a human being, if I was a deputy and I was out on the other end of the county and you called me, I'm going to take my time to get there because I'm going to go some backup. So you got to think about that when you try to cut the budget of the shared department out. But where he can cut that, he don't have the, the amount of officers that he need for the protection that he need. So really think about that. When you, when you cut these, cutting these offices off and everything, and then you got officer out there and he out there on the other side, say, oh, I don't want two twelve out there, and the other off, the nearest other officer is, is, is twelve hours, fifteen hours away, and you expecting him to come and rush to you and he don't have them backed up? So when you, when you cut this budget and, and, uh, take away from the shared department, you got to think about to say, or publicly say it. And so, I'm just saying to the citizen, consider this. The other thing, I, I, I just wanted to say this, I got to say this here. If it weren't for J.C. Henderson and the shared, covered the news of why I'm being, y'all be, thank you, sir, the news, but, but always have...
Got to be on, you're going to focus on, got to be on agenda topics, hold on. Thank you, Colonel. Anyone else?
My name is Bobby Dawson. Uh, I address 1419 Mountain Sound Road, Oxford, Georgia. And I'm here to back up the other two gentleman on our shared department. I'm, uh, I've contacted the shared department several times about steers in our area, and they've given me the same answers, which is we're under spent. And my wife feels handed out. And we live in an area where this is a dangerous spot for steers. Speed limit is forty-five miles per hour. And so the officer are telling us that they do not have a faith to even clock the steers in our area. But there's so many accidents in our yard, it's getting kind of out of hand. And I'm just here to let you know that I'm supporting the gentleman's and there's others in our community that I'm speaking for now. As a matter of fact, this is my first meeting come to, coming to, and I'm pretty glad I'm here to put my opinion out there. And I'm speaking not only for my families, but the families in my, my community. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Chairman and related staff. My name is Gladstone Nicholson, 495 Lakeside Circle, Covington. I come here tonight to re-acknowledge what's been said about the sheriff's department, but I also want to remind ourselves about the whole entire aspect of public safety. You talk about sheriff, you can't forget the fire department. And beings, first responders, they have shared pretty much the same, you might say, um, hardships in this case when it comes to, uh, budgeting. But you know, I saw something today on Facebook, and I'm not always on Facebook, so if I say it, my old hat to many of you, what to me I saw today for the first time. Had to do with a cartoon about corporate decision-making, and it goes like this. Not a good story teller, so it might be, might go overflite, but forgive me. It says, uh, two executives talking to each other. One said, "What if we train them and they leave?" The other one said, "Well, what if we don't train them and they stay?" You know? The idea here is, um, it's an easy call. You know, the sheriff has been training these people, so has the fire department, still they're losing people. So the idea here is, um, take that for its worth and I hope we can do better retention and, uh, of course, compensation for them, as well as all of the company officials and employees, because at the end of the day, we all have families to feed and, uh, we still have budget restrictions. So your job is not easy, and I appreciate you doing whatever you can to make this work out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next we're going to have the, uh, the chairman's report. Uh, we got a special guest with us tonight, uh, Mr. Shane Short and Mrs. Sarah Hall. Y'all were coming this time. Happy to have these guys with us tonight. Happy to have them speaking our chairman's report tonight. Thank you, some blessings beneath the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. We appreciate the time to be with you this evening. You may recall that several months ago, or earlier this year, I came before you to give your report on what the Joint Development Authority was doing for the Facebook project. I'm happy to come back and report to you that after the closing of that project, the Joint Development Authority is now debt-free. They've been carrying, the four counties have been carrying that debt for twenty years. So all of that debt has been paid off. In addition to that, uh, from this point forward, the Joint Development Authority should be self-sustaining. No longer requiring you to have that in your budget every year. Uh, also, as a result of the closing of the Facebook project, we were able to budget an additional four million dollars to extend Shire Parkway. That will allow us to have an additional six hundred acres to market and sell, to bring more industry into our communities. And, uh, currently, we have companies looking at that property already, so we're excited about that. Uh, and finally, uh, last but not least, uh, we do have, uh, a check here tonight to present to you. Uh, there was enough room in, from the sale of the property and the Facebook deal to send money back to the four counties. But before I present that check, since I'm here in Newton County, Sarah, I know you probably don't know that I'm going to do this, but, uh, I just want to commend your Department of Economic Development, Sarah Hall and David Byrne, who works closely with me on the, uh, project in Stanton Springs. And without their assistance, we couldn't have made that project, uh, happen. I can tell you that Megan was involved in a lot of hours of that, Judy was involved in a lot of hours. They saw the hard work that George Parker put into that. Uh, so as a team, Newton and Walton together really made that Facebook, uh, project come to fruition, and I want to thank them publicly for all that they do for the JDA and to assist. Thank you, Sarah. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like for you to come forward. We do have a check to present to you. Uh, the Newton County portion of that check is nine hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars and five hundred dollars. And, uh, we expect to have a lot more of these checks coming back to you in the future. Commissioner, if you'll come forward, we'll get a joint picture.
I want to thank Shane and Sarah for that. As you know, uh, closing deals like that is not easy. They put in a lot of hours, uh, both of them. Um, Shane was the lead on it, and Sarah, she, she worked, ran them with her hand in hand. Let me tell you, we, we got, we got, we got, we got first-class ED department in. Uh, you know, guys, we appreciate you guys, and no shame is in Walton County, but he do, he, he does a lot for Newton County as well. Uh, so we just, uh, and David Byrne, only David, so we want to thank you guys for what you do. Uh, the JDA is headed in the right direction. Uh, glad to have you guys down and helping them with your work. So I want to thank you guys. And this, uh, this check will definitely come in. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner, thank you, sir.
First of all, I just want to just thank everybody for, um, for working so hard to, to, uh, bring, and I just want to, um, to new county. Question I had, and I, and I kind of asked, um, attorneys, um, Mr. Cal, my attorney, and I was, he's supposed to be here, Mr. Major, other attorney. Uh, is there a way to break down of the county, portion of the county, when, I think it's very important, because I, I came to Newton first, um, was, uh, putting together the, uh, what I county authority, and now, uh, you know, sometimes some other counties have gone to counties, break rank, it's a reading on it, and we just kind of, the other end of it, and so I just want to go to other county portions of it.
I may, just Commissioner, I can give you that breakdown.
Shane, you want to let me know about, uh, is not, is that what this tool's all about?
Yeah, that is correct. Uh, so, uh, to give you a breakdown of the, uh, revenue sharing agreement, it's thirty-seven point five percent Newton County, thirty-seven point five percent Walton County, fifteen percent Morgan, ten percent Jasper. Uh, of the pilot payment that will be coming from Facebook, or any, uh, tax payments coming from Shire or Facebook, that is split according to each county's own... that is split according to each county's own, uh, taxes. Uh, any land sale profits go directly to the county, uh, government and don't have to be split with anyone else. So any.
Please, please repeat, please repeat that one more time.
Yeah, so.
Make sure everyone's.
Any land sale profits, uh, do not have to be, are not required to be split in that revenue sharing agreement. Uh, but if it's payment via taxes or taxes assessed themselves, they are required to be split according to each county's tax.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
And by the way, just so you know what the other counties received, Newton County received the same amount. Uh, uh, today we gave a check, uh, to Morgan County for 375,000. And Jasper County received a check last night for 250,000.
Thank you so much. We're going to ask, uh, county attorney Mark to give a quick little bit of.
Commissioner, you're sitting in a pro year question. Um, I received in the mail yesterday, um, the budget submission from the JDA. I reached out to Amy Ray Gray and asked that she come present for this course on the 21st. And I asked that she bring those over to us. So she'll be here at her.
Thank you so much. I want to also recognize our, uh, constitutional officers who are here tonight. Uh, Mr. Evans, Linda Hayes, and, uh, Mr. Melvin Bill, C. Chair, and I do see our DA, Mr. Ladies and Sons. Thank you guys for being here as well. Uh, Mr. Kerr, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, tonight, uh, we have a couple of guests, um, that have come to address the board. Uh, we've been approached by two separate companies. Uh, one company is interested in leasing, um, some space out of our Public Works Department to direct a, uh, cellular communications power. The other company that has approached us is interested in leasing, um, one of the FN bands that we own. And so, uh, what I've asked to, um, Joey Nolan with the Emergency Management, uh, Emergency or the Management Director, um, will be addressing the issue to, for you and answering any questions like that about, um, the radio lease. And then, um, so Joey, if you want to come down, um, and, and, um, he's got a few things that he can explain to you. What I'm looking for tonight is to get a consensus, uh, to either move, to move ahead and continue through the due diligence process on this, uh, or not, on both of these items. So first of all, hear from Mr. Nolan and then we'll hear from Richard Riverwood, who is a representative of ECF site on the cell.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I want to present to Lloyd, um, sometime ago, after Newton County switched over to our 7800 band frequencies that we use for our radio service, uh, Emergency Management retained the VHF and UHF and other frequencies. We had an opportunity to retain those. So, uh, luckily we did, the sheriff uses those bands for administrative building security, plus he uses some of the bands, UHF frequencies for jail security. But we had four near microwave bands that, uh, bands that were truly going good for broadband. And since we're not in a broadband business, we, uh, was approached by Sprint that wants to lease those frequencies and they'll, they'll long-term lease for 30 years. And under the conditions initially, the initial lease agreement, once they receive the finalization on the contract, which any expense incurred through the contract will be their burden, no others. They'll pay $150,000 upfront and for the duration of the lease, they'll pay us $3,500 a month, plus they'll provide us with 10, um, Wi-Fi hotspot devices for the duration of the lease. Of course, they'll be upgrading over the years as that technology fails. But what they really want to do with this is they want to build out and use these frequencies to build out CODG in Newton County for internet service. And that's what we've been proposing. Other companies, I mean, AT&amp;T, uh, I've talked with them and their, uh, department, I've talked with, uh, Verizon. And basically they already have enough frequencies for their spectrum to build out their service in this area. So these four frequencies we have will just complete the spectrum for, uh, Sprint. And that's, that's the whole proposal. Got any questions? And what I proposed, Mr. Kerr, is that, um, we've kind of got my house of training for public safety, you know, financials, but this is an excellent opportunity to use that, uh, through the Emergency Management for training and, uh, additional expenses that may be incurred with training. A lot of that we can do here in the next opportunity. Plus, we could potentially enhance our early warning service with those funds if we're able to close the deal with that.
Um, Mr. Kerr, uh, Richard, any other information to say? I just wanted to note that, um, we have not had any specific discussions about any contract or anything at this point. We simply have been contacted and they have presented this proposal that we can just talk to. So obviously we'd have to go through the entire process if that's what you want. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you and I talked a little bit ago. Uh, and at the time, uh, we, we had spoken, I, I did not know tomorrow that I would be meeting with a, a company that specializes in rural broadband connectivity. And they utilize, um, uh, microwave. All this particular technology. I think I did tell you about that, that we had in Mexico, I had a company come, come do a poll. This is a different company. So I guess my question is, and I, I hear this quite a bit from District 11 and District 12, all of District 12, uh, the broadband connectivity. And so if we sell this frequency, essentially what we're doing, I still have.
Basically, yes.
Would, would, in your opinion, would this in any way hinder any other company that wanted to come in and use that type of technology, um, to service the people in, in rural Newton County? And, and the second part of the question is, maybe, maybe it was true to the first part was, was, is this, is this, is Sprint looking to do a fixed wireless, a fixed wire or are they looking to do wireless type connectivity?
Basically, it's going to be wireless type.
So it would be cellular?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and maybe we don't have an answer to my question tonight, I don't know. But, uh, I, before I go speak with these people tomorrow or going at, I want to make sure that we, you know, would it be pointless if we've already sold it?
Well, it'd be permissible. And I guess if you were to call me directly, I can give you the, uh, call sign for the frequencies. And if that company that you meet with could potentially use those, uh, and maybe offer more to the county than what's available for Sprint to provide connectivity for people in rural areas and, and still be in there. Or if they could piggyback along with that, potentially can use those frequencies as well. Because it's, it's basically data. So, I mean, you're thoroughly committed with that, so it wouldn't be like you'd be talking over anybody. It might slow down the bandwidth at some, some point, but it would depend on how much, uh, was being used at the time broadband was in place. But feel free to contact me, I'll give you those call sign numbers. Uh, and then again, it's basically all we can do with Sprint in that area to build out a, a wireless service.
My question, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Joey, thank you for, um, for heading this up. Um, hopefully we're able to move forward, um, with this and, uh, my hopes and, uh, I've been on this board eight years and Joey, you know, I, I keep asking about our early alert system. And, uh, last week, um, I was downstairs in the office, uh, nobody was there, building was closed at about 5:30. And I'm watching all the people on the square that are here for the originals, um, finale. And then I started hearing tornado sirens. And nobody had an alert, nobody knew what was coming. Um, and I always think about, I think about Nashville, I think about Newport, um, because it seems like we have more activity on that side of the county and nobody gets an alert. You're not sitting there watching Channel 2, 5, or 11, you don't know what's coming. And to have an alert system, I think you, you have, you found a company that has a very similar thing to the Amber Alert System that will hit every cell phone and let people know, um, what bad weather is on the way. Um, hopefully, like I said, this goes through and, and, and we're able to reallocate those funds to, to have a system like that.
And currently, we have bought a subscription to Code Red, which was a system that we discussed and it is, has been implemented. But it's a situation that requires the opting in of the public. And, and we kind of get to a situation where you're doing almost robo calls, so the person has to opt into the service. And we've had a pretty decent campaign with that and we need to reach more out to the public to get people to sign up for Code Red. So yes, we definitely help with that and use those funds to, to pay that annually and also to do, and to get the citizens to sign up for it.
Um, I guess, you know, one thing we can do is definitely get the Brian and get it out on our Facebook and hopefully our newspapers will try to, and help to get the word out so, uh, people will know what's, uh, what's coming. And we did the bad weather system.
Okay, yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you, Joey, but this question is for Lloyd. So, um, I'm assuming that what you need direction from tonight is that we would be willing to pursue an RFP on this, on scope that would include a project like this, is that what you're designing?
Correct. I'm not sure that the RFP process would be the correct, but yes. Uh, direction to move ahead and then we can sort out what we need to do as, as far as that happens.
And I would like to also request that the county attorney provide us, uh, information. There was a rural broadband bill that was passed this year in the legislature and I think that as we move forward with preparing that RFP, we need to have the particulars from that rural broadband bill to make sure it's in the scope.
Anyone else, Commissioner? Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was trying to say, uh, you said Sprint wants to look at a possible, I guess, deal like, from those with them.
Right, yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Stan, he was saying they build a possible another company and there may be, in the same, so, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I, I was, my question centered on would, if, if we got rid of these frequencies, Mr. Nolan was talking about, would it preclude the conversation I may have, I may be having tomorrow with, um, this particular company that may want to come into Newton County to provide. They provide a lot more of a Wi-Fi based technology. They take microwave shots from water tower to water tower and then they Wi-Fi from the receiving end. And that's, that's more what they, so, so concerned with the, the, you know, the, the spectrum that included the, the, um, microwave. And, no, it would, it would, I, I think we're talking about two different things, but have one thing in common and that's that, that's that microwave. So, you know, they wouldn't, one wouldn't necessarily preclude the other unless they both need that, that bandwidth.
Okay, so ours, if my thinking is right, uh, we could, uh, sell the frequencies to two companies, two different entities or something. Ours, Sprint, uh, they said they have their own line of money. And this company, they may be a certain amount of reviews to say frequency, what we were talking about. The one, other thing I'm seeing is I think, I think, and went out of where I picked up, and probably I'll never feel somewhere. But it seemed to me like we were trying to, um, there's a whole lot going on. It should, it should be just kind of determined and Lord, and then we bring out companies or whatever capability they be. And, uh, you know, just kind of figure out what we wanted to do. Really just me going out and talking to this company and Lord going to talk to another company and we out talking, it should be just one voice, bring it all together and put information together and bring it up to the board.
I think, uh, Mr. Kerr is going to do a RFP, so, uh.
I think probably what we would need to do, this, so far Sprint has, has been the only company that has expressed any interest in, uh, the, uh, radio management. Um, I think probably the thing that we may want to do then is to do a solicitation, really as opposed to an RFP, um, for you to see if there is interest other than Sprint to utilize those radio. So that may be the appropriate process. In the meantime, certainly if Commissioner Edwards wants to, is going to meet with another company or if there's another company that approaches us, we just go have some discussion. And then, um, if that doesn't preclude us from doing that while they may be preparing a proposal, formal proposal to the solicitation.
Now, a real easy way to explain it from my end is it's kind of like two-way radio. Your own frequency and Mr. Sage, for instance, Horizon already has their frequencies operating off on AT&amp;T, already has their frequencies, um, T-Mobile already has, already has their frequencies. And you have Sprint who requires the frequency for use for 5G. The other radio, the other cell phone providers in the area have already obtained their necessary channels. And, uh, that is one thing that Sprint's kind of fell behind on, to build out 5G and that's who's been so interested in their dreams. So there is a possibility, like Mr. Edwards mentioned, there may be a dual use, but primarily the only company that's interested is, is Mr. Kerr, which will be Sprint. In a way. Uh, Mr. Kerr.
Yes, sir. All I need from you all then would be certainly the direction, if that's the course wishes, the direction to go ahead to pursue, um, the, not necessarily Sprint, but pursue the lease of the frequencies.
Thank you, sir. Um, thank you, Mr. Nolan.
Thank you.
Uh, if, are you, I'm going to pull the, I'm sorry, I'm going to pull the board tonight to see, are you in favor of moving forward? Um, Mr. Kerr, go out. And, uh, so we can begin to move forward, I guess.
Yes.
You are.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Uh, so, here was a great night, uh, but all of these, all of the, uh, really, uh, there's been a lot of, uh, movement even though that's a bit, basically, uh, for the, for the, uh, town. When we were calling, uh, if these frequencies are necessary, both of them are used to, uh, now, now, uh, the, the, uh, JDA, uh, the, uh, JDA, uh, also, uh, all of the, uh, uh, they have, uh, they have, uh, 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 next, there's a lot of, uh,
So, our project objectives with this, we're working to expand the telecommunication needs in Newton County. Coverage is one need, which that comes when wireless providers does not have the service in a specific location. The ultimate goal with this is to ensure that the cellular device can receive the incoming and outgoing calls, along with data downloads and transfers. The capacity needs comes when a wireless provider is seeing large amounts of cellular data, which is to help to block that. We know there's a challenge in the future, but we will try to, uh, just, I feel like there's a lot of pressure down. Um, so that's one of the, the areas that we're, uh, involved in, ultimately maybe in a, uh, in a, uh, in a, uh, in a, uh, like the power, which is what happens in a, in a, uh, in a, uh, in a, uh, the T-Mobile, you decide to provide, you know, uh, so this will allow the power to use it, and then there's, uh,
Upon completion of constructions, construction drawings, we'll follow in doing any permitted needs, move on to construction. Right here is just an example of what site layout may look like. Our towers are built to house at least three tenants, so T-0 being the first tenant, we would look to hopefully have Verizon and Sprint AT&T eventually join up with tower. If the county needed any space on the tower as well, that's obviously something we can speak about when we get to the contract going. If there's any two-way radio needs that the county may have, it could be a great position for that. Next is an example of the tower that we could use it. We're looking to do a 250-foot self-support tower here, so we could cover a large portion of the area. Again, our tower, albeit 250 feet, it would be a great opportunity for any of the wireless carriers to come co-locate on this tower, reducing their need for, to come to you again about putting more towers than they need to. And finally, our emissions and safety, it's, uh... The radio frequency is everywhere. I know this is one major thing that people generally come to you about. Macro cell sites, the big cell towers, they actually have less radio frequency than a baby monitor in your house or the Bluetooth headset that you use on a daily basis. So, if there's any other questions that y'all would like to post, I'd be more than happy to address those.
Any questions, Commissioner? Mr. Kerr, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Call the board. Uh, Commissioner Edwards. Hello, I'm gonna call the board, see who will, yeah, I wanna move forward. Okay, be good, I've had, Commissioner Sam, be good. Uh, Commissioner Schultz. Be good. Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Carter. Uh, Mr. Kerr, like everybody's in agreement, uh, we can move forward.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir, for being here. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Mr. Kerr.
And that does conclude the, uh, uh, the question.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next on the agenda is item eight, um, table, uh, July 30th, which is special call meeting of the county in Detroit. Uh, this, this item needs to be advertised correctly, so I seek a motion at the table until 8/21/18.
Go ahead, second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner, uh, Edwards, and second by Commissioner Sims. All in favor?
Thank you.
Pass the five zero. Also, item 8-8, uh, adoption of an operating budget. This item must be advertised correctly as well. Uh, I, it was stated at the last special call meeting on July 30th, uh, we need to table it to 8/21/18. Seek a motion.
Go ahead, second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner, uh, Edwards, and second by Commissioner Sims. I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, also pass, uh, five zero. Uh, okay, item, uh, we're, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, um, manage our, uh, business, uh, to, 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 uh, also, uh, for D-Point Health, Mr. Keith Ellis, are you here? Uh, Curtis Gollan, are you here, Mr. Curtis Gollan? You guys also, uh, will be part of the D-Point Health Board, uh, tonight. Uh, Commissioner, you have opportunity to look at the agenda, I seek a motion of approval.
Sure.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson, and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? Pass the five zero, thank you. Especially in consideration for approval of resolution R-060518, uh, attorney Mark, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have Roger Murray with us. Roger Murray has served as bond counsel since Gerard Davis, county attorney down in Cleveland County. Uh, as you all know, there was a SPOS committee that had several meetings regarding primary projects that they would like to see started. Well, obviously, with collections coming in, it's slow to build these nice buildings or other items, so, uh, the SPOS committee has recommended four separate distinct projects to be bonded, and Roger is going to tell you about that process and what comes next.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, good to see you again.
Good, sir.
Um, just to remind everybody that voters approved the issuance, or authorized the issuance of the general obligation sales tax bonds in connection with the last sales tax. So, these bonds have been approved by the voters. As Megan pointed out, a citizens committee was, um, put together and they studied the various projects and presented the documents that going forward, there was a vision, bonds, and pre-funding, uh, four parts, particular east side, uh, East Center, and Center of Sheriff's Office, uh, and, uh, uh, here, if you have any questions, if you might have thoughts on, uh, what happens, um, if you got any questions, you can, uh, 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 yes, in fact, you know, all the SPOS, the county SPOS projects are eligible for funding, and you're not locking yourself in in particular projects at this point in time. That's just the work that has been done thus far, um, those are the projects that people have selected. Uh, but as, but as you know, as part of the process, we'll be putting together disclosure documents, the financing documents, sending them to the rating agencies and whatnot, and so, um, all of that will take several weeks, um, and so, you know, you have up until the time that we print and mail the disclosure document to investors to ultimately decide, you know, what you want to fund, which projects you wanna fund.
Thank you. Those are just the core projects, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that were highlighted, uh, but there were others, I just wanna make sure that those projects are eligible, should they be locked in.
Okay.
Anyway, uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, uh, since the board approved, it's fantastic that we're here. How long will it be before the project, you know, can you concede the project between the year of, uh, year of funding?
We should be able to get you funds by the end of September. Uh, we, you know, we, we have a pretty good starting place because we did have a financial recently, um, and now it appears to be wrapping up the budget, Nicole's, what she has to more free times, as much she does most of the day-to-day, uh, preparation, uh, so.
Thank you.
So, actually, we're sustained, we're here tonight to, to hear that, they would be so proud of, you know. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, why are you waiting?
Yeah, yeah?
No.
I seek a motion of approval, please.
So, uh, let's, let's take it. Sir.
Who said that? It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson, and second by Commissioner Sims. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, pass the five zero.
All right, we'll be back in, uh, September, the, uh, maybe you can extract your copies when we do the meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. The next on the agenda is, um, item eight, item 10-8, um, sheriff's office request for approval of to enter into a lease agreement with Colliers International, uh, Ms. Mark, please.
I have not moved on this, and I worked actually on the Frank's Restaurant project. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that the, um, sheriff is here tonight, and I'm sure he would like to tell you all about the, the West Side precinct, and the things that are just wanting to be offering over there, um, and trying to acknowledge that too, and so.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, good evening, sir. Mr. Chair, those of you that make up the board, always a pleasure to come for you, and to be with the citizens of this county, to share the great things that the, uh, the office of sheriff. It's one of those things that you need here, somehow. I can still say that you have one of the greatest organizations in this town, and it's a big one. The West Side precinct is something that, um, we've been working on. As you know, we have a precinct there, we started out, uh, two years ago, I think it was 2011, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Mr. Schultz, 2011, we started out in a small area, um, we're back on the area, um, the area that we're currently in, um, we accepted it, but it was no less than just, we, we next door to a fish market. And we have, um, stomach of the scent for all those years, um, and I think the officers were putting up with it. Um, we had very difficult, um, times in terms of citizens being able to get in and get out because of the location of it, um, we had issues with being able to advertise there for various reasons, and, uh, just not a good location. And we started working on this, uh, over a year ago, and, um, and I think it's gonna be not only just great for the office of sheriff, but it's something great for this county. Currently, we are in a building, as I said, um, next door to the fish market, uh, when we assumed the building, it was just a shell, um, as some of you may know, or those of you who do not know, I am a general contractor, and I went and licensed the building under my name, my company, and we did all the work, no cost, there in order to do that work with the, uh, Brandon, myself, and others chipped in along with the man, uh, and we renovated the whole building. That building consists of about 800 square feet. That's small, 800 square feet, and before we realized it, we're on top of one another. That's all we had at the time, and I thought it was a simple message to the West Side, but we had not forgotten it. So, now, we're looking at a building that's going to consist of about 6,000 more feet, so, you know, 6,800. And one of the duties about this, this not only we're looking at the office of sheriff, but we're also, uh, we've talked with the tax recessors' office, tax commissioners' office, they're gonna be a part of it as well. So, it's going to, we're gonna be able to meet the needs of the citizens on the West Side. It's going to prevent them from having to come in, pay taxes, prevent them from having to come in, um, to, the, the tax recessors, anomalous areas. Also, another thing that's gonna be good about is the fact that we're hoping to have a training room, or a multi-purpose room, and that multi-purpose room will also serve, and I certainly hope that you will take your board meetings on the West Side of the county, and you will be able to have your board meetings there. It would be, uh, a meeting room if you require, uh, Commissioner Sims, you're going out right now, but I don't know if we're gonna get it up and going by the time, but even you, uh, Commissioner Schultz, uh, and you, will require meeting citizens and groups over there. It's gonna be available, uh, to all of you, and I think it's a win-win for everybody, um, and I'm, I'm, I'm just great to, grateful just to be with Sam, and say I think this is gonna be one of the best rooms on the West Side, and distributed county as a whole to be and bring that 6,800-foot feet, uh, building into what I call a multi-purpose used building, not just the sheriff's office, but it's something the tax recessors, tax commissioner, meeting room, and board room that you all too. We, uh, we have already set aside the, um, the funding from this year's budget, as I said, um, we got to, Mr. Kerr and Nicole, and you already set aside that funding, so tonight, we just seek, um, a motion of approval, move forward in this lease, so we can get started on this West Side facility. Great, um, then, for, for, for us, and I think it's gonna be great for that community just to be able to see a multi-purpose building there.
Um, Sheriff, if you would, uh, there was a couple of people that was trying to get you, could you state the, the people that's gonna be in the, in the building again, please?
Yes, sir. It'll be the office of sheriff, tax recessors, tax commission. It can also be used with all the commissioners to have meetings, and for anyone else who would have a need for a public gathering at the West Side. It's gonna be, uh, again, a multi-purpose used, uh, area there, a meeting room, and we're gonna use it for a training room. We have outgrown our current location. Uh, I think all of you, if you don't believe it, just come over there sometime during the day, there's not a parking area, as a matter of fact, I'm getting with, uh, Mr. Kerr, and as if we can't get with the, um, road parking, as if we can't start, we don't have to do additional parking, every parking lot, we even park inside the road for employees that have no place to park, so we've outgrown that place, not only in terms of just parking, but we've outgrown that place to, in terms of space, availability of space for employees to work and do their jobs, so. The West Side precinct is gonna take some of the, um, some of the strain off of that building too, in many ways, it certainly hope that a number of folks who are coming over from the West Side will then use that building more.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner, any questions? Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Sheriff, you know, I, I'm really excited about this building, and I'm excited about the expansion. I, I know that there are a lot of neighborhoods along the Fairview Road and Salem Road corridor that have, um, HOA meetings, and they, um, they're packing the meeting space, so I think that they will be excited to at least have an opportunity, whether it's for a fee, because I think that they're even willing to pay a fee for that, but, um, and, and I know that many of those neighborhoods really wanna be a partnership with the sheriff's department to make sure that they're, they're doing their part to, for the safety of their neighborhoods. Um, so I do support this, and I, I, I'm very excited about it. I also know that the West Side Youth Facility is looking at that same area, so it's a, a lot of concentration of, um, resources for the community that will be in that area, so I'm, I'm very excited that you'll be, that you'll be in that space.
Thank you. And I think the citizens will be more than happy, the room that we currently allow them to use now is, I guess, probably about 12 or 15, so you can only give just a few, um, citizens that they can get us.
We did some of our focus groups with strategic plan there, and it was a great opportunity for us to have, but it, it was a, we didn't have, we couldn't have a lot of people in this space, so it's good that we're doing to have this space.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff Brown, too. I, I, I think I hear you, um, so this is FY-18, my, my budget, my, my, is that what I heard you say?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Thank you.
But yeah, the good scan that we hear mark specifically for this particular building.
Anyone else? Thank you. Okay. Thank you, thank you, sir. Uh, I seek a motion, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for approval of the, to enter into a lease agreement with Colliers International for the sheriff's office.
Second.
It's been motioned, um, it's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz, second by Commissioner, uh, Sims. Any, any more discussion? All in favor? Pass the five zero.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, I, I would like to just address you personally. Um, I forgot to mention earlier, our back-to-school event, um, that we had this past, uh, this past week, um, we, we serviced more than 5,800 students, which is a great thing, um, that we were able to do that and talk to. The superintendent, I think we have more than 6,000 kids who are in our community that meet those needs, and, and not 6,000, 12,000, that meet those needs, and, and I certainly hope that, uh, in years to come, that we will be able to work together, partnership, to service those kids, um, it's not just a bookbag giveaway, and I know I'm taking up some time, but this is important, it's not a bookbag giveaway, um, these kids are ready the first day of school, they have their eyes examined, they have their teeth examined, they get haircuts, they get whatever you need, they get all of that, and, and that's, that's the reason why, uh, we focus on having, at a location that they can get all of that. Yes, we can take the books, um, to the school, but the school can't check their eyes, the school can't give them a haircut, so that's one of the reasons why. And I was out, and, 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 running, running from up here, like, um, but I was out on last week, and I, I couldn't make the board meeting, but I, I think it's very important that I mention this because, uh, that was an article put in the paper, an article in the paper did not, um, depict the person of who I am, and, and you may have some, I, I don't know what your opinion is, but I can tell you who I am. There's, you don't have to worry about trust with me, as I told everybody, I have an open door policy, if it's something that you wanna know, or something you wanna see, come over to the office of sheriff. I'm not a thief. I have rich heritage, a family of 15, and not one of us hold a criminal record, sister retired as a police chief in one of the major cities. I wouldn't do anything to embarrass this county with an article that was put in the paper that made it appear valuable, and I petition you, as commissioners, to dismiss that from the paper, if it wasn't for the new citizens.
Thank you.
Wasn't it the new citizens? Apparently, they couldn't get together the difference between a P card and an extension This is the P card here, the money that goes on to my salary goes here, this is my personal card, and as I said to someone else, if the law is changed, I don't have a problem providing that information, but I, do you wanna change the law because he's helping? The P card, I have every reason to do the right thing, and if the law dictate that I do, I would do the right thing here. Anytime you would like to see something from the office of sheriff, just come there. I know you may see charges, and you may not understand, that's why I say it's very important that you come. You may see charges on the county P card. We, the programs, very same code I just mentioned, back to school, sure, those items may be charged on my P card, but we have donors, Commissioner Schultz, sure one, and others are one, but we have donors who give us the money, we don't walk around with all this silver, too, with a check, so we charge it on my P card, and we reimburse the county, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So, those of you who may not understand the operation, come ask questions, and you will know. I know there was some concern about taking, uh, uh, General Mills out to Longhorn, sure we explained to General Mills how we spend their money, and after that, we take them out. Now, anybody gives you, and I'm not gonna say exactly what it gives, but anybody give you the amount of five, five thousand to 20,000 dollars, you should take them to Longhorn, and not Crystal. I, I mean, that's, that's simple, that's simple. So, I, what I'm saying, if there's any doubt, and obviously, there is some things that need to be corrected, and we're gonna go about the right way and correct it, but when, when information gets out, there's a certain amount of damage control need to be done, and if you have doubt, I say that you come see me. And I talk about the trust, and I'm gonna leave it to the chairman. The tax increase, it's not just the sheriff's office, tax increase, this is a people business, and we have to do what is best for the people and what's best for the county. Now, I would, I would neglect my fundamental duties if I didn't tell you the needs of the county. I would. Once I bring it to you, it's entirely up to you what you do from that point there. But those are my fundamental duties, to tell you the needs. That's it. I'm not the, I'm not the reason why, if there's a tax increase, and I, as, as I said before, I am not the designer, and we are 40-plus percent of the budget. It's the way the government is set up, and it's the need of the people, and that's what I want to express this afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chair, you were fine, thanks for not throwing the iron at me.
Thank you, sir. Um, commissioners, uh, we're not gonna take any questions over there, but if any of you wanna go over and see, um, the sheriff, or just documentation, and you just, um, say you got open door policy, and you may do so, just call him up and go ahead anyway. Thank you, sir.
And I, it's true, you're not gonna find anything wrong. DA Hen back here.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is item number 10-B, uh, Ms. Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have been working with Frankie Burke on working to track down our original contract with Frank's Restaurant. There is a current contract in place, but we're looking to move that to a month-to-month basis. Uh, however, this is an immediate need of the sheriff's office, so I would, would like to recommend that a motion of approval pending either the county attorney's review of the contract, or the sheriff's office's attorney's review of the contract, such that they hand it within place. I would seek a motion to approve entering into a month-to-month contract with Frank's Restaurants, pending county attorney or sheriff's office attorney approval.
So, a little bit related about the county attorney.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards, and second by Commissioner Sims, any discussion? All in favor? Pass the five zero, thank you. Next on the agenda is item number 12, uh, citizen coming. Citizen coming, uh, if you want to come in tonight, you may come in, come in at this time, please. Please state your name and your address for the rest, please, and come in this time. Please state your name and address for the rest, please, you have three minutes.
Sheriff Hall, um, twenty-one-one Clark Street. I'll give my work, because this is work-related, but I just want to, um, let you all know, on behalf of the State Department, we have just released the job fair date. And so the regional job fair that we hosted last year is coming back, and it will be October the fifth, let's say Friday. It will be held at Georgia Piedmont Technical College. And then we are partnering with our regional counties, such as Walton County, Morgan County, Jasper County. And this year, uh, Green County has come into the table and wanted to work with us as well. Um, I invite you all to come. I appreciate the county coming last year, and their HR team, and setting up a booth. The sheriff's office was there as well, and had a booth, and we really appreciate that. Um, and last year, there were over sixty vendors. Um, this year, we hope to have just as many, up to maybe sixty-five, and there were twelve hundred people attending. And one of the things that we're doing this year is doing continuing education classes throughout the day that will be hosted by Georgia Piedmont Technical College, so learn how to dress and assess, or write a resume, or things like that. So, um, I've been meeting with Mr. Kerr about the job fair and the county's participation, but I'd love to hear from you, and we're really excited. So look in the news, um, and let us know if you need anything from us. So I'm tripin' the fifth, all day at Georgia Piedmont Technical College, off of Bobby Williams Parkway, and then stay the day, thanks.
Thank you, anyone else? Citizen coming, you may come in this time. You can come in this time.
Good evening. My name is Taffa Lamdo. I'm at one-three-one-five Eighth Gray Wolf Lane in Covington. Um, I lived in this community for the last seven years. I'm born and raised in Georgia, and I'm a veteran. And I've been here, and I've noticed that it's just a lot of things that Covington does not offer, and this Newton County does not offer. Last night I attended the city council meeting, as I have been doing for a while, and they kind of passed the buck over to you all. So I wanted to bring my issue, yeah, um, I wanted to bring my issue that I'm having here to you all just to address as a city con, um, as, as the county, and see if there's anything we can help with our children. Um, listening to all the comments and things that's been going on about the disparities with pay, we also have a disparity with, um, things for our children to do. The park and recreation departments have no income-based activities for kids to do here. They charge them a fee if you're in county of two dollars, and if you're out of county, five dollars. The poverty rate here in Covington is seventeen percent, and that's according to the U.S. Census. Says that we have a poverty rate of seventeen, um, percent, and we, our kids cannot afford to go into these places that don't have free activities. We have City Pond Park, Cheney Park, and Turner Lake. The activities there are costly, as far as like eight dollars and upwards, and they do payment plans for the parents. But when you make thirty and twenty thousand dollars a year, there is no way that a parent can, in addition, afford to have, um, their children go to places that cost this amount of money. So what happens is the children kind of flow over into HOA-protected communities where they, um, trespass. Their, the police are called on them, they're not able to, um, have free activities. We need to look at a re, I guess a restructuring of our partisan recreation department to give our children what activities to do, so that they're not loitering, they're not trespassing, and they're not getting arrested for breaking into people's cars to try to find two dollars to go play basketball at Turner Lake. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You can come now, sir.
But we're wanting to invite an east street, no east, I mean, no disrespect whatsoever to the woman who just spoke. You make a really good point, excuse me. Uh, but there are no charges for attending Cheney Park, except for the specific festivals and events that involve a disposal of some food and entertainment, but please go to Cheney Park. It's free and open to the public, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Thank you, ma'am. You can come now, sir.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, my name is, uh, Michael James Cootie. I live at five-eight Central Lane, Covington, Georgia. This is my first time coming to here tonight, but like, it's, it's amazing. I'm proud to see what you guys are doing here. I'm happy to see the people that are sitting up and speaking, I'm, I'm praying at the beginning. This is, uh, not necessarily what I was expecting, you know? There's a lot to say about what I see in this community, but I like, uh, what Edson Brim said about building our presence, letting people know we support them, especially the kids. Uh, this lady is right. There is some fees for some of the parks. One of the things I actually wanted to talk about tonight was the fees at Newton County Factory Shores. And, um, and there was a spot there where they used to basically day park, and maybe technically you're supposed to pay. The people use that to go in, de- definitely low income people, to go and have fun. And I think it might scare someone away that there's gates there now on the signs and pay two dollars. You don't want to come back from the river and have your car booted or missing or something. In addition to that, the dates were put up in such a way that, I go there with a phone and a dog. They, they, I almost hit twice trying to get in this, and then, uh, like, I, I have maybe six, eight inches when you start my truck. So these are small things, but they, uh, there's barriers, and there's really hard to do much in this town. I lived the receipts for the law, I had lived in Australia, and every little town I went to had something unique. Not one town had it all, but together, they had something to do, whether it was a skate park, or a slash pad. I'm seeing Mary had put in a slash pad, actually was helping work on it. Things like this, keep my kids down, help my kids. I know we're talking about giving money to the library. Any money we can give to them, let's try to do it. That is, that's a huge thing I saw when I was in school in Orlando, that they have a place out there where you can go and court music. You can go and learn to flop. You can learn to work an excavator, or a backhoe, and these are things that surprisingly young people find fascinating. And so if we can keep them entertained and informed, they will become inspired to do creative stuff, to help our community instead of getting in trouble and getting more cops. But first off, before we get more police, let's try to take care of the ones we have that's paid over there. That's all I'm going to say, guys, thank you very much. And sorry for my nervous voice.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Deep time layer, it's Wayne Verfatt, I'm here at Chase, Covington, Georgia. Uh, a couple of things I wanted to say. I was kind of thrown back by the lack of the government budget tonight, was not educated in the agenda that would be postponed. Uh, but I do hope that the weeks-long postponement of the budget allows negotiations that would ultimately end the, end the budget without a tax increase. I think if you look carefully at the budget, you'd find that there's, it would be relatively easy to produce a very sound, very generous budget that are thirteen-point-four-four meals. Several people have offered options, including some of the commissioners at, at the Oshie here, for reducing that budget. And of course, one of the most obvious things is not to fund positions for departments that have thirty-plus vacancies. And I'm just as dependent on the public safety department as any other citizen in this room. Uh, I have a, some experience in law enforcement myself. I'm not an anti-law enforcement, I'm not anti-fire department. But folks, we're giving the sheriff a million-dollar increase in his budget. We're giving him five-hundred thousand increase in jail budget. He has thirty-something vacant positions. I think that's probably adequate, uh, funding for the sheriff for this year. I believe our fire department's giving a thirty-something percent increase in his budget. I think that's probably sufficient. So when our citizens believe that the sheriff's budget is being cut, that's simply just not the case. And I think we need to really be clear on that. The other thing I want to say in a minute and twenty seconds is, there's plenty of evidence of waste, wasteful spending, uh, in the county. I think if we remove some of that wasteful spending, would it even be easier to fund our budget within our current mileage rate? I've looked at P card expenses, gosh, it's embarrassing, guys, it's embarrassing. Did I see seventy-five-dollar lunches at Longhorns? Twenty-five-hundred-dollar Christmas parties for staff members? Uh, I don't think the citizens want to fund that. And while P cards represent a very small part of the overall budget, I think they may reflect a sometimes reckless or careless spending habits from part of our officials. So I'm asking for a full audit of all the P cards. Uh, they got fifty-something of them, let's see how much we can save by typing that P cards. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Long, um, five-two-five-two, Row. I haven't really found out something, anybody tonight?
Can, can you repeat your address for me, please?
Five-two-five-two, Row, so, so. Uh, as far as telling about crime and what have you, I've been around a little while, and police not going to stop crime. It's up to us in here, really, to stop crime. And we have to really wake up to the fact that a lot of, uh, as far as in our community, as far as the system, they want these kids there to commit crime, all over the nation and what have you. So it's up to us to really realize that, and work towards that. And it's not a thing of just, uh, going to the corners and talking to the kids. Public service would do a lot as far as, uh, talking, as far as explaining things to the kids in their own. Public service, just to add a note, and mention the positive thing that we expect them to do. They hear a lot of naysayers we expect them to do, and that has a subliminal effect. There's a lot of psychology that's involved as far as people doing crime. If we mention to the kids we expect to be negative, new crime, they will have a tendency to, please, and go that way. You have to tell kids posi- uh, positive things we expect to do, positive things, be progressive, what have you, they will have a tendency to lean that way. And the system is aware of that, and as far as stopping crime, put more, uh, towards influencing the children if possible. Police is not going to stop crime. We need, we need police or what have you, but as far as, uh, stopping crime in its, uh, itself, it's not. I don't care how many cops you hire, it's not going to stop crime. So just let the kids know, you said, well, it's small things, but it's, it's the, it's the thing where you're putting negative things towards them and to influence them to go negative, so, but it's a small thing. With the, uh, just let them, uh, be aware that we expect positive things from them, and that would help all over the county, not just in Newton County.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Claire Renee, I live at seven-ninth Avenue, um, Circle in Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-point-six. I stay tonight, um, and at least I stay by running a shelter. And I want to say to you, I feel safe because, uh, Stacy Cotton and Sheriff Brown. I can call them at any given time, and they respond. Not only that, the churches, all our, uh, superior churches, uh, Church Vale, all of these people work real close with the shelter, and making sure that safety is first in place. I remember one, just one yesterday, um, there was a guy that was doing some things, and I picked up the phone, called Sheriff Brown. It was in a split sucker, caused with him and her, to make sure that I was safe. And I appreciate that, I appreciate, uh, the sheriff department, and also Stacy Cotton, make sure that safety is first priority there at the home and shelter. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Please station agent, address for the record, please, you have three minutes of time, if you can.
Hello, everybody, I'm Deborah Blackman, fifty-five, Fifth Bottom Drive, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-four. Yes, I just relocated back here in Georgia. I lived in Covington before Magnolia Heights, I was the third, ten years in the Everday Hilton, back there, ninety-four, ninety-two. Um, I'm addressing at this point that where I live now, I want to know if there's a way that we can, the county, states, and the city, can get some revenue out there where we live, because with the communities that we have out there, it's a lot of children, teenagers and little children, elderly, and all we have out there are gas stations. I mean, every four mi- every two miles is a gas station on each corner. And, uh, also, I want to thank you very much for paving at that station, because that's where I get my car, I pay. And they, I'm complaining about it, and they pay that in the dollar general, I appreciate that. And, uh, for eateries, we have a thing, we don't have drug stores, we have to come all the way out here to get there, or at least two-seventy-eight over Jackson Highway down thirty-six. So I'm across the roundabout at FFA Camp, that circle there. And it's a lot of empty space out there, even going a little path, and the sign says eight miles from Jackson, from my subdivision, which is Parker Terrace. And we are really in desperate need there, and a lot of people come, they go to the store, they buy a lot of stuff. The gas stations have a few things, but it's not, it's a very high demand, with my eateries, maybe a drug store, grocery store, and it will bring jobs and also good revenue for the county and the state itself. But it is in desperate need, and it's pretty far, and I have to pay a nurse to stay with my son and ride thirty or forty minutes, because he is a, well, I'm also a advocate of the Brain Injury Foundation for my son also, and his employer. I'm, I work with him, and I also was caregiver. And so for me to do that, I'm just asking the feet, you know, kind of consider it of that, and maybe see if we could build it up, because they are still building other houses on the other side, but there's nothing out there for us that we can have. They don't even make deliveries out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chairman, no more to pick up too much of your time, but, uh, it just pulled the lines, and I might like to come up here no more, I don't know.
Okay, we're, if you would just station agent, yeah?
My name is Richard Johnson, New York, nineteen ninety-five, Hollywood, sixty-two South, Covington, Georgia. I made a J. Phil Murray company, and it's been here all my life, eighty years. And I'm concerned that the safety, and still the safety of our citizens in the, of Newton County, and we could do better, we got too much crime going on in the county. We have too much crime going on, the sheriff's department can't do it without, police department can't do it without. We have to consider that, how serious it is for the sheriff, or the police, or the police officer, to put on a gun and a badge and go out to, uh, a home invasion, or robbery. Uh, any of these other serious crimes that we are having within the county, if they don't know well, they go back home or not, then they love them. They're going out to beat, well, hours protection. And, and that's serious, that's serious. We got too many guns on the street. I wish y'all would think about that, we got too many guns on the street, and we are going to put guns in the schools. That's no answer to our problem. Putting more guns is not an answer to the crime that we have in our county and in our state, uh, today. and in our state, uh, today. Less guns. I was right there since very long to defend your house and protect your property. I don't see where it's necessary for citizens to walk around, um, with forty-five on their side and machine guns in the car to protect them when you got a law enforcement officer to do that. We find and treat them right and they can protect them. I feel, this is just me personally, I know I'm, I'm a minority here, but I feel that if you're not a law enforcement officer, a military person, uh, you have no business, uh, going legally hunting, you have no business with the guns on your side in your car. No, that's, that's the one D, baby. And I feel that, uh, less gun, less crime. If we take the guns out the street, if we put guns where they're supposed to be with legal law enforcement agents and take the guns out and those people that's caught with guns in the street and they're lost, then, then you take them off the street along with their gun. And then we can eliminate some problems. But with more guns, more crime, it's sad that you can't drive down the street and you hear it every day. Forty-five people getting killed with long range, playing out in the street with guns. If we take them off the street.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's, that's my concern. Let's, let's think about that. Let's take guns off the street. Take the criminal off with the gun.
Thank you, sir. One more, anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Freddie Johnson, I live in ten-thirty-six Hollywood sixty-two, Covington. Just, well, I get a lot of phone calls, uh, you know, I've been working with the cemeteries and cleaning up and so forth. I get a lot of phone calls asking about, uh, certain cemeteries and so forth. And I feel like that it's time now to get ready to get started. Normally we would, uh, try to do cemeteries around, uh, Martin Luther King's birthday. But I've been getting calls saying maybe we need to work on some during the summer months, you know? So, uh, somebody I had talked to the other day said that there was a group of people wanting to help out with the Gayville Cemetery, the slave cemetery. And if you all have been there, you know that's, it's, uh, the Harper's State. I was there about three years ago, I think it was, we were there and, uh, I'm just free to the county, just kind of help us out a little bit. I don't know what we're going to have to do. Because there are a lot of trees that, uh, you know, embedded in the graves and everything. I don't know how we're going to go about doing it. So, uh, Mr. Everett, if you got time sometime, give him a call and, uh, we'll go down and take a look at it and, uh, see, you get your, get your, get your opinion on it, okay? So let's just keep that in mind and, uh, go for matter.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Get ready to get into town. Commissioners, comments, uh, tonight. I will start off first with, uh, Commissioner Epps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johnson, uh, as a matter of fact, it's, I believe it's next Thursday I'm attending a meeting with the historical society and they have reached out to me about addressing that particular cemetery. And I'll get, I'll get with you. And we'll go for matter, I think.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Sam. Uh, Commissioner Schultz, Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah, uh, thank you, sir. Well, I would like, just, just, um, say it was very, uh, kids, after just like you mentioned, when this says, the, uh, city council police and sheriff, I, I was about sheriff, he's around, he came out and the kids, he's in Georgia, but I estimate about two or three hundred kids, um, that came out and really took advantage of their kids and cops today. And I also would like to thank the city council to do such a nice article, um, you know, typically, we don't get no nice articles from the city, I mean, from, uh, the new, but we will thank you for that nice article. Uh, second, uh, hey, hi, we also there. We're out here and we clean up a whole lot of trash. It'd be like that kind of, uh, leaving, uh, leaving kind of thing beautiful, uh, supply of dumpsters and stuff that we filled up with trash. And lastly, just want to say that, uh, all sheriff that he had here in New County, nothing, been around a few. Uh, Sheriff Brown, in my opinion, is the best sheriff that we have ever had. And he is a very hostile and I can remember when he first came home, he requested money, we should took money from him. And I remember the depression that we had and that he went out and got grants and kept the department going. And so there's, you know, it's sad to me that we would come out and, and talk about petty cash and saying that he like, he's doing something wrong and, and I know a person. He is now a better person than Sheriff Brown in our community. And we should be thankful that him, uh, coming here to New County and serving us what he has in his, under his leadership. And so, um, you know, you know, sometimes I think that a person is doing good, we should thank them. And then if there's something that you believe that he or she or me is doing wrong, should come out, even if it's the paper, whomever, and talk to them personally and maybe they can tell you exactly, uh, what's going on. I know personally, in most cases, they can tell you nothing. It's quite awful. They don't ask you for the, the correct information. But make a long story short, I thank Sheriff Brown. His service throughout the community, his continued service.
Mr. Cal. Thank you. Yeah, we want to, uh, thank you for being here tonight. I don't think we have a better session. Uh, we want to thank you guys for being here. We know, uh, a link to me, but we appreciate it. Appreciate your attendance. Let's take a motion there with a draw. Two, three. And both, Mr. Henderson, second, Mr. Evans, all in favor.